Going on, then after our recognitions, you know, we always are able to, if you need to go somewhere, you can. So with that being said, I will start into our recognitions. The first 600 score that we will recognize is Mr. Mason Murphy. So congratulations. Mason received a perfect score of 600 on his grade six reading CAT. Okay, so congratulations, Mason. We're gonna look at this nice lady over here and then we're gonna look at your mom. Congratulations. Our next recognition is Zachariah Branson. So please come on. Yep, congratulations. Zach received a perfect score in his civics and economics SOL. So we're gonna go here and then we're gonna go to mom. All right. Okay, wait, come this way so we don't get. Congratulations. Our next recognition is Caroline Hatfield. Caroline received a perfect score on her civics and economics SOL. So we'll go here first and we can go back to mom. Awesome, congratulations. Now, if at any point in time I mispronounce a name, please do not hesitate to correct that because I don't like mispronouncing names. So Batula Brain or Brahm?
Brain.
Brain, I got it right the first time. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Batula received a perfect score on her grade six reading SOL. So congratulations. We're gonna go take this picture and we're swol around. Ready? Anybody else? No? Yes, okay, here, we'll get right here. Nope, nope. Yes, perfect. Perfect. Congratulations. Next recognition is James Mark. Congratulations, James. James got a perfect score on his grade seven reading SOL. So we're gonna take a picture here and then look right there. All right, we ready? Congratulations. Next up is Theodore Echols. Was Theodore able to make it this evening? It does not appear so. It's super busy, so I certainly understand, but Theodore got a perfect score on his Virginia Studies SOL. So congratulations. Next up, Jordan Massey. Jordan received a perfect score on her Virginia Studies, correct? Awesome, good job. Congratulations, we're going here and then. Anyone else? There we go. That's a thought. Congratulations. Next up, Rush Newsom. Is Rush here with us this evening? Rush Newsom. All right, that's okay. So Rush received a perfect score on his Virginia Studies exam, or exam, SOL. So congratulations to Rush. Oh gosh, and I apologize already. Mr. Alexander Velazquez Zidro? Is it Zidro? Alexander, no? Okay, gosh, if I mispronounce it, my apologies, but congratulations, received a perfect score on Virginia Studies SOL. So congratulations. Ms. Ava Barry. Was Ms. Ava Barry able to make it this evening? Okay, Ava received a perfect score on her civics and economics SOL. So congratulations to Ava. And just so for those individuals who weren't able to make it with us this evening, what we'll do is we'll send these back with the school principals and then they will be able to go into the classroom and award this in front of their peers, which I'm sure everybody will love, but they will have their opportunity to be recognized as well. So don't fret, they will be there. So Ryan Little, is Ryan with us? Oh, yep. Ryan received a perfect score on his World History I SOL. So congratulations, Ryan. We're gonna look right here and then we're gonna look over there. Okay, I'm gonna switch sides with you. No, no, you get to hold it. There we go. Perfect, congratulations. Next up is Katerine Salvador Vasquez. Katerine, here? No? Okay, that's okay, congratulations to Katerine. Perfect score on the World History I SOL. So congratulations. George Knight. So I don't think I see George George this evening. He may have a game. So congratulations, George had a perfect score and on his end, of course, reading SOL. So congratulations to George. Jacob Piedra. Jacob received a perfect score on his grade five math SOL. So congratulations. All right, oh, wait, no, we're gonna turn and we're gonna go right here. Sadie Whalen. Sadie received her perfect score on your grade five science SOL, correct? So congratulations to Sadie. We're gonna look right there. Awesome, congratulations. Macy Simpson. Oh, this is, I'll get to you. So Macy got her perfect score on your grade five SOL, science SOL, correct? Awesome, that's awesome. So congratulations. Here we go, we're gonna look at this nice lady. And we're gonna turn right over here. Oh, wait, no, mom. Congratulations. All right, got a lot of these. That's a good, that's a good thing. Olivia Morris, was Olivia? Yep. Congratulations, Olivia. Olivia received a perfect score of 600 on her grade five science SOL. So congratulations. You move under that and I'll just go over here. Nope, move over a little bit more so we'll get you out of that podium. Congratulations. Thank you. Alexander Forbes. Was Alexander, there you are, yep. Congratulations. All right, so we're gonna, Alexander also got a perfect score on his grade five science SOL. So congratulations. We're gonna go over here, right, 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 right. There you go. Rowan Brain. Rowan received a perfect score on his grade five math SOL. So congratulations, we're gonna look right here and then we're gonna go over here and look there.
Actually, he was in third grade last year.
Oh, gosh, we're gonna correct, well, okay, so he's in fourth grade this year. Got it, we're gonna make sure we fix that. So I'm gonna give you this, but we'll fix it, okay? Yes, there you go.
My good buddy.
Congratulations, we're gonna go over here. All right, Easton Coffey. Easton Coffey, no, okay, Easton received a perfect score on grade three reading SOL. So congratulations to Easton. Last but not, oh, nope, I believe that's it. Did we miss anybody? Anybody sitting here that we may have missed? I don't think so, but I just wanna double check. That's the, okay, congratulations to all of our students that received a perfect score of 600 on their SOLs. Anybody who knows anything about this, it is a very stressful event and to be able to rise above and get a perfect score on it is definitely an accomplishment and congratulations to you. I know we are very proud of you and I know your families are and I definitely know, looking at the faces of a lot of our teachers and staff members that are here, they're very proud of you. So congratulations, I know some of you may have to leave, but congratulations. Next up, we will, oh, I have to wait for that to end.
It'd just make me cry.
Now, if any of you that were sent towards the back that would like to move up to the front?
So we left their wallet.
Little, Ryan Little.
Yeah, practice. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the one Nelson Award recognitions with Dr. Hester.
Okay, all right, that's me. All right, so this is one of our favorite times in the evening to be able to recognize our one Nelson Award winners. What this is, for those of you who are not familiar with it, is this is an opportunity to recognize not only our students, community members, our certified employees and our classified employees. Certified would be cafeteria workers, custodians, transportation, front office secretaries, all types of workers in that category. And then certified is you're gonna be your teachers, maybe administrators, someone of that nature. So that is not, that is not the only list, that is just an example of what that is. And really what we try to do is recognize those individuals that really go out of their way, above and beyond, to give back to the community, to other students, to the schools in order to help everyone be successful because we believe that it takes everyone to make Nelson County Public Schools and all of our students and all of our families to be successful. So that's, that's kind of the background of what this award is. And so what I would like to do is I would, I wanna recognize first our students. So do I have Mr. Sanchez in here? Come on. So Jaime Sanchez is a middle school student, so we wanna say congratulations. And if you're gonna read through it, well, you get to stand in front of everyone, all right? So Jaime is an incredible young man and always has a huge smile on his face. He has a great sense of humor and is a very hard worker in class. He is extremely polite to his teachers and he works well with his peers and they often look up to Jaime. He is always willing to help other students when needed. So we wanna say congratulations, thank you for being so willing to be that friendly face and that helpful peer to your other students. So we appreciate that, congratulations. We're gonna look at her and we're gonna take a picture and I'm gonna give you something. You wanna turn over here? Yep, right there. Congratu, hold on one second. With that, you guys can walk. That has one Nelson on it and it is made by one of our staff members. So they, in and of itself, are contributing and giving back to others by making that for you. So congratulations, congratulations. Juliana, was Juliana able to make it, Piedra, today? Okay, I was able to speak with her a little bit earlier, a lot going on with younger children, so I will go ahead and read through why Juliana was nominated. Juliana has been a supportive parent and community member to the students and staff of Ty River Elementary, Nelson Middle School, and Nelson County High School. She is always one of the first to volunteer to provide food and supplies for special meals for the staff at all three schools, as well as meals for the soccer teams before games. She and her husband provided a farewell meal to all the staff at Ty River when her youngest son left for the middle school. Juliana is a huge supporter of the soccer program. This fall, she also helped two middle school students be able to participate in off-season training through the Nets Travel Soccer Team. She has given of her time to communicate with Spanish-speaking families and provided rides to practice and games, and even volunteered to take these two students to Virginia Beach for a weekend tournament in December so that they didn't miss out on the experience. Juliana is truly an example of showing the one Nelson spirit. I will also say she was also one of the friendly faces in the parking lot before football games at tailgates and was always more than happy to provide others with a taste and a wonderful flavor of the culture. So wanna say congratulations to Juliana Piedra. We appreciate all that she gives back to our community. So we will make sure we catch up. Next up is one of our classified employees and it's Ms. Amy Jackson. You have to bear with me and listen to it. So Amy is one of the most dependable employees at Rockfish River Elementary School. She is always hard at work feeding the students and she hardly ever takes time off. She was always willing to try new things and do fun promotions for the students. She is very knowledgeable and hardworking. She is a gift to putting to good use her cooking knowledge for her students at Rockfish, a true asset to NCPS, the students in the nutrition team department, a definite one Nelson spirit. I will also say that she's one of the first to go all in on themes and theme days in the springtime with the Easter Bunny. And also serves on one of our advisory boards. So you know, just when you think that you don't have any more time to give, you find a way to be able to do that. So we wanna say thank you so much. We're gonna look at Kim over here. Ooh, Donna, stop. Congratulations, thank you. Oh, wait. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Wingate was not able to make it this evening. He is with his child tonight, but I will go ahead and read what was submitted from Mr. Wingate. Zach is truly an exceptional and dedicated educator who goes above and beyond in his efforts to support the success of the students. With a genuine passion for counseling and an unwavering commitment to the well-being of all students, Zach consistently goes the extra mile to ensure that each of them is able to thrive. His infectious enthusiasm and caring nature create a warm, nurturing school environment where young minds feel empowered to explore, grow, and reach their full potential. Zach's supportive approach extends far beyond the walls of the school as well, as he makes himself readily available to parents, offering regular communication, helpful guidance, and listening ear whenever they have questions or concerns. His colleagues too recognize Zach as an invaluable team member, always willing to lend a hand, share resources, and collaborate in the collective pursuit of educational excellence. So Zach Wingate is one of our school counselors at the high school. So that is how he contributes. Thank you, Zach. We appreciate everything. And that.
So next, we have a special recognition. Oh, okay, I'll do that. That'll be done. So Ms. Tammy Ponton, will you come up for a minute, please? So Tammy is gonna be retiring at the end of the month, right? You see that excitement on her face? At the end of the month, after 24 and a half years of service with the school system and for the last six and a half years she's been our board clerk, and has done a fantastic job. So I'd like to read this resolution recognizing Tammy's accomplishments in service. Whereas Tammy Ponton, Tammy Branch Ponton has served as the school board clerk for the Nelson County Public Schools for six and a half years and an employee of Nelson County Public Schools for 24 and a half years in various capacities, demonstrating dedication, professionalism, and a deep commitment to the betterment of the district. And whereas during her tenure, Tammy Branch Ponton has contributed to the efficient operation of the school board, ensuring accurate documentation, maintaining transparency, and fostering positive communication among the school board members, district staff, and community, and the community. And whereas Tammy Branch Ponton has played a crucial role in organizing and facilitating board meetings, managing district records, and supporting the school board in its decision-making processes, always acting in the best interest of the students, family, and staff. And whereas her work has been characterized by tireless effort, integrity, and strong sense of responsibility, creating a legacy of trust and respect within the community. And whereas Tammy Branch Ponton has been an exemplary public servant, demonstrating a passion for education and a steadfast commitment to the success of Nelson County Public Schools. And whereas the school board and the entire Nelson County Public Schools community recognize a significant impact of Tammy Branch Ponton's service and express sincere gratitude for her dedication and her hard work. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nelson County School Board officially honors and commends Tammy Branch Ponton for her outstanding service and leadership as the school board clerk, and be it further resolved that the Nelson County School Board expresses its deepest appreciation for her many years of service and wishes her all the best in her future endeavors, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Tammy Branch Ponton as a token of the school board's esteem and gratitude, adopted this 12th day of December 2024 by the Nelson County School Board. And we'd also like to present you with a little gift.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want us to move over? Is that what that meant?
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
It's my time, your time. You can relax now. Congratulations.
So, we're gonna do comments first or let them go first? Do comments first, right?
I usually do comments first.
Yeah, so now we're to comments from the school board members, so Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Special thanks to Tammy for keeping me in line and letting me know the things that I need to look at when I need to look at them, just so I didn't miss anything. Thank you, Tammy. Thanks to everyone, especially all the students that scored 600 and the one.
Yeah, lots of big.
Not just the 600, but all of the students that worked hard to get through the SOLs once again. And just thanks to my board, you know, we're going into budget season again, so we're gonna be spending a lot of time together. So we just wanted, just wanted to recognize everybody. If I forgot anybody, just thank you for all the hard work you've done up until this point this year and we really appreciate it.
So echo Mr. Perkins's comments, the 600s are a pretty incredible accomplishment. For some kids, that's just not attainable and it's passing if it's a pretty incredible accomplishment. But there's a lot of work, whether it's just you kids doing it, whether it's the teachers, the IAs, even there are people who get them on the bus or feed them a healthy lunch so that they're ready to go. So there's a lot of work that's done, but congratulations to you kids for doing that and for achieving that. That's quite a milestone. Also, congratulations to our one Nelson winners. If you've ever seen Amy's pictures, she goes all in on her costume, so that was nice to see her recognize today. Tammy, I don't know what we would do without you. It's really gonna be, you have really kept us straight, you work hard. I don't think people have any idea, I don't think you ever walk away from what you're doing and we appreciate all that you do to not just keep us legal, but to make this fun and the special little things that you do for each of us. So you will be missed, but this is what it's all about. Go enjoy. And then, everybody that's here tonight, thank you for coming. We have received some communications this week that have been really special, really important, and we really, really appreciate that. I hope you know that as a board. And we are heading budget season, so a little grace, a little peace with one another and we'll get through it. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna also say wow, 600s are really, really great scores to get and I definitely wanna, you know, everybody has to go, almost everybody, I guess, has to go through the SOLs. And I know from having kids that it's just, you know, it is a stressful time and this time of year, you know, it just seems like it piles on, but you know, we got through it and that's really great and thanks to everybody who participated in that huge effort. And Tammy, I can't do this, I'm kind of disabled that way, but love you. But we'll see you in January, so I don't feel like that bad. And I did wanna say that I did go to the school board convention, Dr. Hester and I attended, and I missed you guys there because the, you know, you think, well, I'm just going, this is like, I don't know, my 11th or 12th year? No, it would be my 11th year. And I haven't gone every single year to that thing, but the, you know, the information that's generated there is just really important and this, you know, budget year is gonna be as challenging as last year was and there's other stuff going afoot in the state, you know, that is gonna possibly impact us. So our studying and our understanding of what's going on so we can advocate for Nelson County Schools here at home in Nelson and also, you know, to our legislators is quite important. And if there's any kind of questions that anybody has that we could answer or we could get answers to about that process or any way you could help, if you, you know, have a direct line to, you know, the governor or whatever, you know, let us know.
Hello, Governor.
Yeah, hello, Governor. And then I can't remember the rest of what I wanted to say, but there, thank you.
So just wanna echo what everybody else has already said. Great job by everybody. I mean, I always look forward to the one Nelson Awards because, you know, again, that was Dr. Hester's idea when she came on board with us and it's been fantastic because I think it fosters community involvement and its recognition of what people in the school system and within the community wind up doing to help these kids and that's really why we're here, is to help the kids. You know, the 600s are extremely important, but one of the things that, and I congratulate all of the kids, it's a long list of kids that they've made perfect scores, which is amazing. But one of the things I love about here is that we meet people where they are. So not everybody can make a 600, but they get extra help and we try to get them to the highest level they can achieve also, you know. And so I like the fact that we are in that kind of community, you know, where we try to lift everybody up to the level that they can be and it's okay. So really appreciate everybody being here. We are really close to the end of the semester. I don't, what's the countdown, how many days we have?
Next Friday.
Huh? I have six. Yeah, just six.
Six hours.
Six school days.
Yeah.
As I was reminded by another student, he's like eight.
And occasionally, I'll run into people that say, oh, man, y'all sure do go to school early. But the benefit is when the kids go home for Christmas break, there ain't any more school when they come back. And when we were in school, you know, we had to come back and it was, you'd been offered two, three weeks or whatever it was back then and you had to relearn and get ready to take exams and whatever, and we don't have that. We start over, start from scratch. It's like a whole new school year when you come back, so.
Georgia was 40 years ago.
Easy.
Well, I remember when we changed it, so it was a good 10 years ago.
Yeah, so, but anyway, but thank you to everybody for everything that you do to support these kids. I really appreciate it. And Tammy, just really thank you for everything you've done for us. As Shannon said, it's not, not just keeping us legal, it's keeping us in everything. It's, you know, oh, I can get that document for you that you've forgotten, left at home or whatever it happens to be, or I can send you something or whatever. So really appreciate it. So, but congratulations because time is the only commodity that you have, you know, and it's the one thing that we have that, we can control it while we have it, but we don't know how much of it we do have. So congratulations. All right, next is important dates. December the 20th is the end of the second grading period. We will be on winter break from the 23rd through the 31st. Wait a minute. Nope, wrong.
That's the December part of the winter break.
My bad. So from the 23rd of December through the 3rd of.
January.
January is winter break. On the 6th of January, we have instructional planning, 7th is professional development. The students will return on the 8th of January. Then our school board meeting's on the 9th. Report cards go out January the 10th, that's right around the corner. Martin Luther King Junior Day is on the 20th. The projected 100th day of school, projected because we don't know what the weather might hold. We're in a La Niña year, but we still might get snow. On the 24th of January, the 31st is National Fun Work Day and Green and Gold Day. And, yeah, and then there's some other links that you guys can check out for VSPA meetings and conferences, okay? All right, next we have comments from our student representative.
So apparently the school is going through a couple fundraisers that are just trying to, you know, help because of the holiday season coming around. So. The One Act, the, the One Act will be going to West Albemarle to compete in the state competition for the outsiders, their play, so best of luck to them. SOL testing, like we just went over, it's, it's been, from what I've seen personally, it's been going good, and it's going to continue, hopefully it'll continue going well up to Christmas break.
Just a few things going on.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up about the One Act play. That's the state competition for the state championship that's going to be held at Western Albemarle High School on Saturday.
I want to say it's around 5:00, it could be 5:30. I'll double check on that. That's their competition time, and it's one of those, like, we do need to know the exact start because they shut the doors and you can't come in.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry?
About 15.
5:15, 5:30, you know, whatever, it's in there.
But yeah, they, and admissions free, doesn't cost you a thing to go. The kids will love it when you support. I know I used to go all the time when I was old doing it, and it's, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, good luck to them. All right. Now, we are in comments from our student representative.
All right, I'm just going to go ahead and take my place so we can roll right into the Pathways to Success. Last day, as we saw on the important dates of the semester, is Friday, December 20th. I have been asked, is it a full day? Yes, it is a planned full day. And I will say, not to get anybody's hopes up, but a week out, we are seeing maybe the possibility of a little bit of weather, so that will mean, that will be an early start to that day to make sure that our roads are ready to go. That's always a day I hate to miss, and I know our teachers hate to miss because it's such an exciting day, and it'll be so long before our teachers are able to see their kiddos, so we hate to miss that day. I'm not saying we're going to miss that day, I'm just putting that on your radar, so to speak. We will start back up January 8th, which is a Wednesday, so we will keep an eye on all of that as we move forward. And I want to echo the congratulations on the 600 scores. I mean, that is truly a great accomplishment. Passing is an accomplishment, but I always feel like it's really worth mentioning that we do recognize the 600s and the passing, but we also really want to value growth and improvement. And because for some of our students, that, they are improving upon themselves, they're working hard, and it really is important to be able to recognize that feat. And for some of our kids, this is a difficult time, and for our adults as well. And so, recognizing the hard work and the grit that it takes to keep on moving, keep on pushing is really important. So, I want to recognize just the hard work across the board. Our high school students are going through SOLs right now. Our elementary and middle school students, they're, they're starting remediations and they're going through that, so there's a lot of hard work, but in six school days, we have a, a break that we're able to really take advantage of, and I always encourage not only our staff and our students and our families, take that break, enjoy it, enjoy your time with family, friends, relax, take care of yourself. It's important so we can hit the road running when we get back and really have a successful second semester. Those are my comments. Yes. And, well, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much, Tammy. We talk about people keeping them in their, in their lane and doing what they need to be doing. That's not always easy, but she is, she does that for me and always provides me with snacks. So, I, I appreciate that greatly.
Okay. Pathways to Success.
All right. Pathways to Success. This is always one of my favorite. In addition to the One Nelson Awards, we get to highlight the, all the different things that are going on. I may have a bummer, I probably should turn it on. I feel like that might work. Yep. So, as mentioned, the VSPA conference, Ms. Irvin, there's a few of us able to, to really attend, to be able to understand heading into budget season and all the different components going into it, and beginning to work on the 2025, 2026 operating budget. We anticipate December 18th as the release of the governor's budget, which really kind of serves as that, that guide for how we build. We are also filing and following up insurance claims, auto, and workers' comp, and finalization of the 2024 workers' compensation audit. For instruction, you know, finishing up the semester is always a, a big push. VASCD, we believe very strongly in growth, not only of our students, but of our adults and our professionals, and being able to provide those opportunities for development. And so, VASCD is a really great conference. We're able to send our building-level leaders and central office instructional leaders to go. Lots of information on AI, lots of information on a lot of different things, and just how do we build and support our, our teachers and our students, particularly, you know, students like our English language learners and at-risk students, and, and finding all those opportunities to support them. We also had VTSS, Virginia Tiered Support System Training, updated our Virginia Literacy Plan, which we'll share more about in our next school board meeting. We are currently in technical review of the gifted plan. We had Division Spelling Bee, we'll highlight the winners of that in our recognitions for the January, but we want to say congratulations to our winners. It, it doesn't come as a shock that one of our 600 scores in civics was also the winner of the spelling bee, so we want to say congratulations, and we'll recognize them in January. We also have Vows of Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, and VKRP assessments were completed for the fall. BRVGS, which is known as the Blue Ridge Virginia Governor's School, no, Virginia, yeah, they changed it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they changed. I'm not sure why, but they changed it, but smart, they didn't have to change the letters out. Applications have been submitted. We're pretty excited that we're, we've gotten more and more of our applications. And early childhood and VPI report completed, and class, which is the assessment portion completed by the directors in the fall observations. We have our fall-winter data reporting coming up, so we're kind of really heading into an important season. And then are also our civil rights CRDC data collection taking place. So, a lot of things happening, and I mentioned the spelling bee, and those are those winners right there. Human resources, we're, we're, we put a survey out last week to all of our staff to nominate the Teacher of the Year for the 25, 20, 26 school year. So, we're able to collect that information, and we're going to head into where the schools, the, the school leaders are going to select the winners of each school. Then they will have an opportunity for a committee review to then determine the Division Teacher of the Year. So, that's always a really exciting thing, for no other reason than it is peer nominated, so that value and meaning, meaningful experience is there. We also have early childhood and learning, our Provisionally Licensed Teachers Incentive Program, and then Personnel Intention Form, Intent Form is your intent to return. So, we have that out, that is, has been due back. So, we have a lot going on in our, in our human resources. For our pupil personnel, SED and Student Services, for those of you who were able to make it this past Tuesday to a family event where the focus was on setting, teens setting boundaries in online, it was put on by a Nelsonian. Can you remind me of his name?
Melvin Perro.
Melvin Perro. So, you have your own Nelsonian coming back and being able to give back to the community and really educating on some incredibly important items. We also have outpatient mental health services that we're developing and implementing, particularly starting at the high school and middle school. It's, it's therapy being able to provide for our students in our buildings, and that will be able to expand some of the students we're, we're able to provide services for. Starting this year, Ms. Roydinger and her team had a great idea that they're going to have a SED help desk, a special education help desk, at each of the locations, and really what it's able to is it gives not only SED teachers, but Gen Ed teachers, an opportunity to go and ask questions and get support and feedback from those who deal with special education and, you know, whether it's IEP, 504, any questions that they could possibly have, so they can support their students better. So, they go into each of the schools, and, and they set up shop, and it allows teachers in their planning time or whenever to go and ask questions. And so, I really appreciate, you know, being able to go out because as a Gen Ed teacher, you don't always know. You really don't know, always know every single regulation or every, every single opportunity, so I appreciate that. As I mentioned, the family event this past, the topic Talking to Kids about Setting Healthy Boundaries Online, spaghetti dinner, free giveaways. I think we're running out of the, the great beanie hats that everybody wants, and then also, great information. I'm looking at her. Yep, it's great. We probably need to kind of order some more and then get them online. So, we just appreciate all the things taking place. Our Zero Eyes Project, we've talked a little bit about that. I believe we passed that, was it that October school board meeting or November? Now, we're heading into that phase of really identifying the compatibility and getting everything set up so we can start to transition into that. And I had Lieutenant Templeton reach out to me today, you know, you know, let us know so we can support you in this, and, and we're moving forward with that. They're planning on having active shooter training in April, and my first thought is, wow, we really need to make sure that we notify these individuals of that training because they're going to get some alerts on that. Also, Technology Department is working with instruction to finish several projects like the Promethean Boards, teacher laptop, and Chromebooks at the elementary level and the carts. Technology Department is also working on other network projects, the switching, the different switches and controls, camera refresh and, and fiber replacement. Also, using train users on best practices and using school-issued emails. I thought Mr. Cargill presented some really good information at a principal's meeting today about, from November to January, schools are hit at an increased level for cyber attacks simply because it's the holiday season, probably most of us are shopping more and more, but we're also used to getting inundated by emails, so it just almost is a great opportunity to set, to set up for some cyber attacks. And so, I really appreciate getting that information, and I appreciate the efforts of our, our technology team of keeping us safe. Maintenance, Maintenance Department is working to schedule quarterly continuing education with workshops that pertain to issues related to divisional maintenance. So, again, it's that extra emphasis on, on staff growth and development, so I appreciate that effort. Recently had a refresher on how to properly repair and replace door hardware to make sure that we keep things safe. School Division completed annual fire marshal inspection in November. Each school and maintenance department are working to complete the issues found, if there, if there are any. Maintenance departments also work to winterize athletic fields, so if you don't know what I mean, there's a, kind of a, a building in between the baseball fields that has water and bathrooms and everything. Well, it needs to be winterized, so we don't have any problems when it freezes and the temperature changes. So, and then also Honeywell started removing water-cooled chiller from the vocational weighing mechanical. This is in preparation for the arrival of new equipment, so thank you very much for that. Transportation, Taylor Ashley and Sharon Nash, lead trainer, attended a two-day training. Update with DMV for our third-party testing, and that's an opportunity for us to provide that testing so we don't have to send our people out. So, I really appreciate the, the thoughtful thinking of how do we provide these services for our own. They learned a lot about new testing procedures and trying to obtain their CDL. That is a valuable license, whether it's for us or anything else. What a valuable opportunity to be able to get that. We also had another busy month for field trips. That's what that picture is down in the bottom right, all the different field trips for sports and remediations and other types of travel keeps them busy. Virginia DOE recently updated the preventative maintenance manual for Virginia public school buses, so it's making sure that we update our pre-trip forms and, and other procedures to stay on top of things. And for our school nutrition, we had a lot of the Thanksgiving meals in November, but also, we had a holiday meal today at Ty River, and I, we kind of, Amy Jackson earlier today, she really gets into it with the celebrations, and it's just all of our nutrition crew do that, and it just adds an, an extra layer of pride and fun, not only for their peers and, and other workers, but also the students. They love to get into that. So, we had successes last week, last month for the Thanksgiving meals at both elementaries. We also had the Virginia Food for Virginia Kid, Virginia Food for Virginia Kids. It's a cohort, it's a grant we're working with, it's, it's promoting the scratch and, and parcel of scratch to be able to, to work through that. And it's the concentration to evaluate the program and efficiency to make recommendations and on how to cut costs and also reach nutrition, nutrition department's goal of implementing more scratch cooking and purchasing from local products. And we really have an emphasis that, and it's not hard because we're surrounded by a lot of great producers, and they are wonderful support systems for our schools. I always like, ooh, did I do that? I did do that. Oh, my bad. Can you hook me up there, Tammy? My fault. That was me. All right. I always like to provide this information. For the crossover month of November to December, student breakfast served is 11,189. Our lunch meal's 16,847, and we had a little bit of our dip in our after-school meals at 81, but still what that tells me is we are really providing everything that we can for our students when it comes to the meals and the nutrition. So, I appreciate all of our, all of our sites to be able to do that for our students. And last but not least, just celebrating our community engagement events right before Thanksgiving. We appreciate the partnership with Saunders Brothers where they reached out and said, we'd really like to be able to provide pansies for each of your staff, so they did so, and we're just so thankful for that willingness to celebrate. We also had a partnership with Food Lion this year where Steve, the manager over our local Livingston site, was able to attend 300, 360 turkeys, frozen turkeys, and at a, at a really reduced price. And then add to that, you have Nelson 151, Taylor Smack with Blue Mountain, and then Wild Man Dan, and then Three Notched, Afton Mountain, and Valley Road, who kicked in to be able to support contributing that to our, to our teachers and all staff members, and we just are so thankful. We also had some private donors to be able to contribute to providing that to all of our staff, and we're so thankful for it. Toy Lift is taking place, and this is a wonderful event where there's a collection of toys, and then Mr. Campbell and a few other people and teachers go and they collect these toys, wrap them, get them prepared, and bring them back for Rockfish, Ty, and middle school students, so some of our, our families who are just having a rougher time of it are able to provide those presents. High school, I always get a question, why are high school kids left out? They aren't left out so much as it, they just are supported through a different program, and this is an outside entity doing this. We also had a lot of holiday celebrations, as you can see those pictures going through the middle. The, I want to thank the sheriff's office for escorting our football team to the Amherst County Line as they encouraged them to success for the playoff game that we had been, was it 2003, 2000, something like that, since the last time we were...
2014.
Yep, yes, since the last time we were in the playoffs. So, really, that, you know, that's, that's what you get out of Nelson, that, that internal support of each other, and I just, I greatly appreciate it. Our One Act Play, they go tomorrow at 5:15 to compete at Western Albemarle. Five, what?
Saturday.
Saturday, what did I say? I'm just...
Tomorrow.
Oh, you know what? Yep.
Today's Friday.
Yep, it is. Friday eve, my bad. So, it's Saturday, not tomorrow, Saturday. Western Albemarle at 5:15. We also, to celebrate our partnerships, is Farm Bureau, they've been doing this for about a year and a half, two years, but they select an athlete of the week and, you know, give them a T-shirt, give them a shout-out, so we appreciate that. We had Pancake Breakfast with Santa at Rockfish, I believe it was last weekend. We also had a Character Counts Celebration at Rockfish, and also a kindness initiative at Ty River. So, again, really promoting the, the interconnectedness of kindness and character and also our community. We had our own Little Macy's Day Parade-type thing over at Ty River that was awesome to be able to see. And our band and choir performed their holiday concerts last week, which was, you know, auditorium was full. We had a fun, exciting little night when the fire alarm went off on one of the evenings, but everybody, you know, was able to handle it with stride. There wasn't any problem. We had some work being done, and someone just hit, hit, hit a sensor, set it off. So, our new assistant principal was able to learn very quickly and be able to deal with that excellently to be able to turn everything off, so we appreciate that. And that is our Pathway to Success.
Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that we are always, I am always in charge of how much is actually going on in school, and just this long, long list of how hard everybody's working, and not everything is work, a lot of it is fun, but wow, it's just every single month you think, well, this week will be very busy, but it is. Every, I mean, she's got tons of stuff to celebrate. We have got tons of stuff to celebrate, and thank you for keeping track.
That's a function of the whole team.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's doing it. I, I hope that our team understands how much, not just we appreciate, but the community, the kids, it's, you are truly building the next generation, it is everything that you are doing.
And that is our pathway to success.
Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that we are always, I am always amazed at how much is actually going on in, so, uh, in the schools. And just this long, long list of how hard everybody's working and not everything is work. A lot of it is fun, but, um, wow, it's just every single month you think, well, this week will be very busy, but it is. Every, I mean, she's got tons of stuff to celebrate. We have got tons of stuff to celebrate and thank you for keeping track.
That's a function of the whole team.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's doing it. Um, I, I hope that our team understands how much, not just we appreciate, but the community, the kids. It's, you are truly building the next generation. It is everything that you all are doing that puts those kids out. And, uh, you are appreciated. I hope you guys know that.
Yeah. I've heard it said, especially when we were building, um, Ty River and, and Rockfish Elementary, everybody talking about community schools. We truly have community schools. Every, every one of our schools is a gathering place for events and, and for, uh, school events and other events for people to do sporting activities and all kinds of things. So, um, yeah, thank you to everybody that makes that happen. So. All right. Next we are comments from the public. And we have, uh, three speakers signed up. Deanna Mitchellson-Shaver is the first speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Deanna Mitchellson-Shaver and I'm a, a special education teacher at Ty River Elementary School. I feel it's super appropriate that I go right after the one Nelson report and all the positives that you guys just hit up, uh, up here. So that's really my point tonight. So I've been in education now for over 20 years. I've been here in Nelson County since 2016, 2017 school year. So, uh, even though I'm known throughout central, central Virginia as a habitual job jumper, coach walker, I feel that I've truly found my home here at Ty River. With a background in sports, I suspect I subconsciously may have always been looking for a niche or a team. And you just hit on that, Sharon, Shannon, where I felt supported and respected. Uh, and I have, uh, that has been fulfilled here, not only at Ty River, but here in Nelson County Public Schools. So I have found my work team at, at Ty. My colleagues, my admin, and even my students here are more than just business partners. They are my family. And I thought it's super cool that Nico was here tonight because she created this. I honestly feel more supported under this, uh, district's administration than anywhere else. And I, and like I said, I've jumped. I've been all over central Virginia and Nelson is my homes and I love it here. And this is from my superintendent, uh, you, the school board, and on down to the building level. So as within any family, team, or business, it is inevitable that problems or setbacks will occur, but I feel that this division does the best that it can do to solve these issues in a timely, rational, and fair manner. We have a lot of pride here. Heather laughed at me. I'm pushing out our mission statement a little bit here. We have a lot of pride here at Trace. I've got three minutes. I gotta hurry up. Okay. So we have a lot of pride here at Trace. Um, and we are, uh, focusing on increasing our community engagement opportunities. We had a meeting the other night with Dr. H and our local churches and some sounding board. And we're getting off to a right start with that. Children and parents to be excited about learning. We want our parents to be involved and to be heard and to feel respected. I hope that together we can focus on what's the most important topic and that's our children. And I, again, I'm on the clear and focused squad mission. Uh, and this actually came from Elizabeth Shepherd, who is a cornerstone of this county, cornerstone of Ty River. And this is her statement. I'd like to read it to you. At Ty River, we have pride and strive to progress academically, emotionally, and socially. We want to reach our goals in a safe and caring community. We want to integrate community with collaboration. We want to develop new ideas and ways of thinking critically. And we want to encourage one another to be good citizens. And the last one is a major point of emphasis to me. Um, we, we want people to be more of the solution and not the problem. Okay? And so I just wanted, before the, uh, 2024 school year ended, that we are doing a lot of great things here and I'm very proud of our county. Thank you.
Next up to speak is Ms. Patty Morcom.
When do I, does the timer start when I get up here? I'm, I'm, I'm nervous.
We'll just say, and go.
Okay. It's hard to follow the original toy, right? Teacher of the year, toy. Okay. If you don't know, I am, uh, I am not known as Patty Morcom here. I am known as Aunt Pat. And, um, that is me. Okay. My position at Ty River is a paraprofessional, but I do various jobs throughout the classroom and school. I will go wherever I am needed. I have been an employee for three years, but have a part of the Ty River family for eight years, beginning by volunteering in my nephew's classroom until I was fortunate enough to be offered a position. Um, it was awesome. I would come in and I would, uh, help Mr. Stinson, who is now at the middle school and participate in his classroom, which is where I got to meet the teachers and become friends with them and then be able to work with them is phenomenal. Um, I have gotten to work alongside the teachers, instructional aides, and administration of our school. The aides of Ty River are amazing at what they do, helping students and being there for each other when needed. The teachers are hardworking, dedicated to their students' needs, and wear many, many hats. The leadership of our school is nothing but strong, supportive, and focused on taking care of the students and our staff. I am grateful for the opportunity to work in this county and specifically Ty River Elementary. Our faculty and stealth, staff are a family. I enjoy going to work. You can ask anyone. I love my work. I hate when I have to take off. I never take off if I don't have to because I feel like I'm missing out being with my family, my friends, and the students. I love being a Ty River Tiger. I could go to any one of the, anyone in our school for help and they would be there for me as I would be, uh, do the same for them. It is not an easy job some days for anyone in our school, but we show up, we do our best, and we take care of our number one priority, which is the students. I am extremely thankful to be able to work alongside the staff, faculty, and the administration at Ty River Elementary. So I just wanted to give my girls and boys a shout out because Ty River is awesome. So thank you for your time.
All right. Next up is Mika Clark.
I have stage fright, so if I pass out, just kick me to the side and pretend I'm not there. Um, I should have written a speech, but I just want to say how much I appreciate every single one of you. Dr. Hester, um, I don't know everyone personally, but I have seen each and every one of you supporting the school at events or community, um, stuff. And I know that does not go unnoticed. Um, Dr. Hester, thank you for having, always having. You're just very approachable. You allow us to come forth with any and all questions that we might have. You answer, to my best knowledge, very honestly and kindly. Um, but yeah, I just want to say how much we appreciate you guys. You have a tribe behind you. So I want us to focus on the positive.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers before we close?
Um, and I think, uh, Shannon moved to this earlier. We have received some, uh, emails this week and we read all of them and we are very, very appreciative of this. Okay. So next is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda is the registers for November 2024 and the meeting minutes, second reading for the October 10th, 2024 meeting.
I move that we approve the, uh, consent agenda?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for everything, guys. We appreciate you.
Okay. Down to items for information. Um, meeting minutes, first reading, school board meeting, November 14th, 2024. Um, update, uh, I'm sorry. Next is, uh, item B is the update on the capital improvement plan projects of Mr. Les Campbell.
So some exciting news today. After months of telling you that chillers are coming, and they're coming, and they're coming. Uh, the air-cooled chillers are to be installed and delivered and installed January the 3rd. Uh, Dr. Hester talked about the air, the water-cooled chiller, uh, originally put the 23rd, but I got an update this afternoon that, uh, it'd be delivered on the 15th. And we have it scheduled to be installed on January the 20th. Um, of course, I, I provided some pictures and they were on the, um, the pathways too. That's the water-cooled chiller that's down in the mechanical room. Uh, that supplies the entire vocational wing. So originally, again, it was the 23rd, now we did the 15th. I was a little, a little nervous about ripping all of this stuff out and then cooling season's right around the corner, believe it or not. I mean, we're in December, but it'd be before we know it. So, uh, it, I felt better today when I received that email that it's coming early than I anticipated. So, uh, they're still working on, uh, Honeywell's still working on crossing over the, the four gym units that we had put new from phase one of the renovation. Uh, they, so it could communicate back to the Honeywell computer, the front end, so I can control the, turning it on and off and temperatures and stuff. Um, there's, they're AC units anyway, so it's not that big of a deal right now, but hopefully they'll have everything back up and going so we can.
Any time to workout.
Yes, exactly. Um, the, the air compressors, one of the HVAC air compressors has been shipped and Honeywell is going to install that. There's a lot of work that's going to be happening in December and January. Um, so all of this, hopefully, my, my goal is to try to wrap as much up of phase one as possible before we start into phase two. So that don't intermingle as much. Um, then, uh, as we're talking about phase two, uh, we met with Mosley back in November the 20th and we went over, uh, turned the page, uh, mechanical electrical plumbing, um, uh, what's going on with that project. And we made some, um, adjustments to what they were recommending as far as, you know, how much piping do we want to replace for plumbing all the way down to the electricals, uh, system. Um, they went back and we just met with them today. Shannon and I met with them today. Um, and they, it was a really good meeting. Those two meetings have been some really productive meetings as we were actually getting into the meat and potatoes of the, the systems. Um, so a lot of good things come out of, come out of that meeting today. Um, they, their goal is to send that the RFP in mid-January. And so we, today's meeting was trying to button up a lot of the, the, the other stuff to go over as far as mechanical, electrical, plumbing. So we can get this, the RFP out in mid-January. They're, um, they're, right, as of right now, their goal is to get it back mid-February. And then that way, by March, they can present it to you guys. So you can review it and then we can secure contractor at that point. Um, the comprehensive facility study that's been going on for a while, um, they, they've been working through that and really trying to look at this facility study and look at the CIP and see what they can put, you know, what we can put in the CIP as opposed to put in the facility study. Um, that, well, today was, part of that today was to finalize the findings of the facility study. And they were going back to finish that up. So you guys should have a, a final draft very soon for the facility study. Uh, the high school elevator, I just stuck that on there just so we, we haven't forgotten about it. Have a look. That's part of phase one. Um, I, I reached out again this, the beginning of the week and asked for an update. I haven't received it yet. Uh, but I, I still stay on top and see when, I know initially it was a 10-month waiting period to get all the parts and all in. So, uh, what we're going to do there though is we're going to continue on with, in updating the disconnect. We have to put a new disconnect because obviously the elevator at the high school is old and the old disconnect will not work with the new equipment. So we're going to move forward installing that. And then when they do show up to, and modernize the elevator, we, that's already in place. The, uh, as far as CIP, um, the Rockfish playground, and we kind of run, run into this with the, um, Ty River as well. Uh, all of these parts that they have, they bring it to put together, obviously something is, you know, can easily be overlooked. Uh, so they had some parts actually that were delivered up here today. So we asked, they sent them to Rockfish and I will reach out to the contractor tomorrow and tell them we have received them today. So we can get that playground opened up like Ty River. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
We'll hit you up later.
Okay. Went up.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Next up is the update, oops, sorry, from, uh, new course proposal for, proposals for NCHS with Ms. Kim.
Good afternoon. Um, at the heart of what we do is academics. So I'm excited tonight to talk more about the instructional processes and what we do as a system to make sure that we provide engaging learning environments for students. Um, the first thing that I wanted to reference is the schedule for registration and orientation. Um, this registration is actually an organization of that registration process. It goes through the year. This is given out in the fall and there's collaboration between the principals, um, the school counselors, um, central office to develop this, um, guide that helps, um, kind of create that organization part for, um, our students and for registration orientation process to get to the point of new course proposals in our program of studies. So I just wanted that to be as reference. That's given out in August of each year. Um, new courses. Why new courses each year? Well, sometimes we have more than others. This year we have nine new courses proposed. Um, and they're often there because of the evolving educational needs, um, in divisions at the state level and the national level. Provide students with relevant and diverse learning opportunities and align the state and national standards. So those emerging career trends, the student interest, um, there's an interest survey that actually goes out that's on that registration schedule that you just, um, saw posted. The educational innovation piece, the state requirements, and college and career readiness are all pieces to that puzzle. And when we look at new course proposals, um, I'm just thrilled to say that they all align with our portrait of a graduate. So the five Cs that we have presented earlier this year. Um, so looking at that, there's a resounding theme of those five Cs throughout each of these courses that I'll propose tonight. Um, and they're all contingent, all nine of these, on staffing and student enrollment in each course. So we have to look at course numbers. We're doing scheduling. We have to look at, do we have teachers certified to teach courses, that type of thing. So all of these things are being contingent on those areas. Um, again, back to those nine courses. We're going to start with Biology II, Anatomy and Physiology. It's an advanced elective course and it's designed to provide students with an in-depth understanding of the human body structure and function. Um, this course is actually going to be a detailed exploration of that human anatomy and physiology piece through lectures and lab work and practical application in the classroom. And it really sets kids up for future careers. So the career fields would be healthcare, biomedical sciences, and research fields. It's an exploration in that area. So after completing Bio One, they would be, have the option to take this course. And then that would be an introduction to those fields. Um, this is a high number of requests for Bio Two. Um, some of our seniors have actually mentioned to Shemane Day at the high school that they're sad to say they didn't have the opportunity to take this course when they knew this was a possibility. Um, so I'm glad that there are other students will be able to take this in, in the future if it's approved. Um, computer programming. The introduction of computer programming course is designed to equip students with foundational knowledge and skills in computer programming. The course emphasizes computational thinking, um, problem solving, real-world application, and programming concepts. And it sets students up for careers in technology. This is actually a course that would enhance our technology program. It's an additional course offering, um, and would expand the offerings that we currently have.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Biology II, that's in between biology and AP bio, or how does that?
This is an optional course. So this is actually going to be an elective course that they could take. Um, so they could take it in that sequence, but this would be a Bio One first and then Bio Two as an option. So they could go into either.
They could go in AP without taking Bio.
Absolutely.
But it's an option.
Digital applications. Um, this is a name change only. This actually had been in our course guide years ago and had been collapsed. Um, we're bringing this back to the course guide. Um, we now have, um, staff to support this course and we have hands-on experience and modern digital tools and applications for this class. Um, it focuses on productivity, communication, creativity, and problem solving. Um, it really is a way for exposing students to a variety of software applications and digital platforms. Um, and they explore topics like online collaboration, digital ethics, and data literacy. Um, this is really the coverage of emerging fields and technology such as artificial intelligence, which is a big topic right now, um, cloud computing, and cybersecurity basics, which Mike has talked a lot about here recently. Um, this course prepares students to navigate and thrive in the increasingly digital world, um, and really equips them for those transferable skills and that align with those career pathways and that post-secondary education.
Questions?
Sure.
With the new computer courses and the, the one that's being brought back, will there be opportunities for kids, for students to earn their Security Plus and A-plus certification?
I can get that answer for you. I'll have to check and see what the course sequence is for that. Um, I know that we're trying to beef up that technology piece for that purpose. So, um, I'll give you the final answer for that. And we have career pathways.
Security Plus is going to be with a couple of different, uh, courses. There will be state. Security Plus is going to be with a couple different courses, there will be state credentials offered for this, in addition to Microsoft certification.
Okay.
Two other things.
All right.
We're in a little bit of a state of flux with regards to credential exams that the state's going to be offering.
Okay.
Right now, there's like 250, and we're trying to narrow that down to a smaller number, and also in alignment with the new state accreditation metrics with regard to what will be identified as high demand, high wage, high demand, or just a pretty credential, because we're going to have to be very deliberate in which ones we are offering to maximize that.
Yeah, the only reason I ask about that is I have a lot of friends in the IT business where I work and other places, and that just seems to be like the, that's the first question when people go to apply for those jobs, do you have your A-plus, do you have your Security Plus, you know, so.
Yeah, sorry about that, that's CTE.
No, no, it's okay, it's just a question that popped into my head as I was reading...
The program of studies, in the back of the program of studies, we have like career clusters, and we have those pathways listed, and we have course suggestions in that area, so that's something else that could help. AP Computer Science Principles is another course on proposal, and looking at that, it's designed to introduce students to the foundational concepts of computer science and programming, and that emphasizes that creativity, collaboration, where we're problem solving, and then looking at this, the curriculum framework prepares students for the AP exam at that course. It feels like, in this course preparation, the students will be exposed to fields like artificial intelligence, app development, and data analysis, and that'll be increasingly significant role in all those industries, and equip students with foundational computer science knowledge and skills, which is essential. And looking at that, it'll empower the students for those, again, technology-driven careers overall, and then further studies in computer science, engineering, and those related disciplines. The DE Quantitative Reasoning Course, previously on students, in the associates program, we're able to take this course, it was only offered to those students, and now any student can participate in this course, so we're excited about that opportunity with a, a teacher in the classroom. So, looking at that, we have explored topics like proportional reasoning, financial literacy, statistical analysis, and mathematical modeling. This course actually aims to equip students with that quantitative tools that are necessary for academic success to become informed citizens, effective participation in data-driven society, so thinking about that as a whole, it just makes them a well-rounded citizen, and application in those areas. They'll develop the ability to interpret and analyze quantitative information, apply mathematical concepts and solve problems in diverse contexts, and that includes that finance area, health fields, and environmental studies, and prepare students for further academic study and practical application of those disciplines. So, that really promotes that college readiness piece through exposure to those rigorous academic standards and expectations, and then they'll earn those college credits, and then this is in alignment with the Nelson's Prof. of Graduate again, and fosters those workplace and life-ready skills. The next course is an AP course. This is AP English Language and Composition, and this is in tandem with that AP United States History, so these two in conjunction will replace the Humanities course, and there's more rigor with this AP option, so the AP English Language and Composition course, juniors could participate in this AP course, so looking at that, it provides other opportunities. Advanced Placement, of course, as a whole, will align with the College Board's Curriculum Framework, and then it offers the school, high schools, develop college-level reading, writing, and analytical skills. Again, it's a rigorous course, and it'll challenge students to create that engagement with a variety of those non-fiction texts. It goes through spanning historical documents, speeches, essays, journalism, and visual media. I actually spoke to Mrs. Knight about this yesterday, the combination thereof of the AP US History and the AP English, and she was really excited about the context of those conversations, and just the ability to have those, you know, those, that rhetoric in the classroom, those rhetorical strategies, and that conversation back and forth with students, and the ability to voice that. So, the course will cultivate advanced writing skills with argumentation, synthesis, and reticle analysis, and that'll develop that civic and cultural awareness. AP United History on here as well, that starts with pre-Columbian era to the present, and emphasizes critical thinking, historical analysis, and evidence-based argumentation, do you see a theme there? So, look at the benefits of the course, included enhanced preparation for college-level coursework, and the opportunity to earn that college credit, and a deeper understanding of the historical foundations of the US. US, I'm sorry, Film Studies Two, this is another sequential course, so looking at Film, Film One, and then Film Two, and the sequence, so looking at the behind-the-scenes of Film Studies, really the production side of film, so looking at this, it's an advanced course designed to deepen that student understanding of cinematic arts, there's screenwriting introduction, cinematography, directing, and editing, and going through that process, it looks at collaboration, problem-solving integration of visual and sound elements of those key concepts. So, this class prepares students for further study of careers in the film and media industry. Looking at flexibility and conditioning is our next course offering. This course is actually an additional option other than weightlifting, so it gives students who are interested in flexibility as opposed to powerlifting, another option, so they would take this in lieu of. The Flexibility and Conditioning class is designed to promote physical fitness, injury prevention, overall well-being for students, and emphasizes flexibility, core strength, and conditioning through the structured routines like yoga, Pilates, and the dynamic mobility exercises, so thinking through that. It incorporates elements of physical fitness overall and well-being as a whole for students when they graduate. Looking at this, it's, again, it's, can be practiced in their daily lives, they can gain knowledge in those areas, and if they want that option for flexibility. It aims to provide students with practical tools and maintains physical health overall for students. Any questions about those course proposals? That was fast, I'm sorry, but there's a lot of information there.
We like it fast.
It's such a mix of new classes, right? Like, one of the things we talk about is meeting kids where they are, we want to teach them to how to have rigor in courses and to be challenged, but do it in a way that their brains relate to it and there are things that interest them, and so you've got a diverse mix of classes here, the kids that want to expand their repertoire classes, you're gonna, you're gonna have something that most kids will appreciate somewhere along this.
Exactly.
And I, it's, I really appreciate the diversity of them.
And I think the focus on the computer programming, I mean, it's essential, especially if you're going to, you know, study further, or, I mean, just getting into a job, an office job, you know, having some exposure to, you know, the Microsoft suite and Google and all, I mean, I know they've got Google by the time they're in third grade, but, you know, I mean, those, those programs, like, if you're interested in biology, if you don't have statistics or an exposure to some of the statistics, that, you know, it's really hard to, to catch up, you know, to what you need to be to succeed in the, in the later studies, so, love it, I'm not going to show my kids.
For the AP classes that are proposed, if they, if you do follow through with that, what is the plan if you utilize a teacher that maybe doesn't have experience teaching an AP class, because the prep for the exam, because that's really kind of what you want to move people towards, will there be supports for those teachers in learning how to manage and pace an AP class?
So, they would need to be able to teach that course, so there's, there is college-level courses, but it's their AP, and they're trained by that college board, and their curriculum is consisted nationwide, so we're going to have to have teachers that are prepared, they also participate.
Participate in, is it a course, or a means to the AP board for training, so that would be over the summer, if they did already have that, the ability to teach that course and that, that background knowledge, so that would be something that they would participate in.
Some supports there.
Right, right.
Somebody who doesn't have that experience.
And the DE courses, more college-level courses, are offered through partnerships with the, we know with the high school and the college, so, through, that's a little different, and that's really determined by the college versus a nation, you know, national curriculum.
And they're very good at like trying to offer different flexible training opportunities, or some person or online, and trying to match you up to different regions and all of that.
Do you have a lot of kids wanting to participate in these classes that you think are not necessarily up to the class?
I think the counseling department does a good job of vetting students and working with them, and one-to-one meetings, and having those conversations before they're enrolled in a course that they couldn't, you know, they couldn't necessarily sustain in. So, I know they give them guidance throughout as well. I walked over to the high school just yesterday, and there, there was a, a small group going on, supporting students that were having some anxiety and that type of thing, but going through that to help support students in any way we can, whether it's academic or emotional, I think the counseling department does a good job with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The next thing I had on there is just the program of studies, and that program of studies, it just serves as a guide to help students, parents, and educators plan, and really understand those courses, like we've talked about tonight with those nine, and the academic opportunities that are available, and that helps with some of those areas, so knowing if they had a prerequisite course, so, you know, they had, would have to work through that. And at the end of this program of studies this year, we have that, the career pathways, so looking at, like I mentioned earlier, like what courses would allude to certain professions, so to help promote that with our students, so they know, you know, what it would take to get to a certain area or a certain field, you know, post-graduation, but I think...
You guys have those conversations with like seventh and eighth graders, right?
Right.
They kind of have to start right then in order to get...
We have, don't think career exploration, I think even down until we're elementary.
Right.
And so, those conversations start, you start talking about the opportunities and various aligned pathways. Now, obviously, that conversation is not, is in detail to a fifth, sixth, seventh graders it is to like rising ninth graders, tenth and eleventh, and, and Dr. Tapper Zadinsky has a lot of conversations in working with all levels to be able to promote those, those discussions. They actually created, I think it was called the ACP Academic Career Plan, in the seventh grade. So, they start articulating their trajectory through the core academic classes, the CTE classes, and it's revisited every year with the counselor, creating the schedule and planning process.
That hasn't changed, I mean, like I, like I said, I wouldn't share this to my kids because I'd be like, I wish I'd had that.
Well, and, and there's more and more emphasis that throughout the state.
Right, right, right.
To do so as well, and then you see a lot of the overarching themes of the, the five Cs, or...
And the rigor, right.
...first learning, and high wage, high demand. I will, I, I would, it, it is, it needs to be stated that like, high wage, high demand, we're still kind of plus, what exactly does that mean, does that mean throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the region, but also, it, it may not always align with what the needs are in Nelson County, so we want to spend a lot of time of how do we align ourselves with the high rates, the high demand, but also the needs of Nelson, the interest levels, and how do we serve all of, all of our students in that pathway process and really...
Really getting students to think about what are their passions, what are their interests, that support that pathway, so I think that's, you know, just turning people on to that as opposed to... Why.
A lot of the conversations are about life after high school. So, course description, graduation requirements, pathways and programs, planning tools, additional resources provided to support, all prepare them for what it looks like as an adult.
Right, and then they'll say, as the year after high school, nobody told me any of this.
Any other questions?
No, but that's, that's where it's at, and you guys are doing a great job of helping these kids figure out what it is that they want to do. I mean, I believe in high wage, high demand, but only, like you were saying, if it fits the student and fits the needs, you know, if, if it works for them, so, thank you.
Thank you, that's good to see you, thanks.
Yeah.
All right.
My gosh.
What's the matter?
Nothing.
All right, any more comments or anything about items for information? Because I've got my old man glasses on. All right, we're down to items for action, the first item...
I know, you got one left.
Am I not? Oh, yeah, I gotta do that.
We gotta do the work.
I tried to skip it.
I know, you did.
I'm just kidding. Now, we've got, so this is our time, this is our time to, sorry, I tried to skip that. This is our time as a board to, you know, kind of state what our input goals and desires, wish lists are for our upcoming budget season that we're all looking so forward to, and, and we have provided on paper and within the agenda, an embedded piece, the, the board goals, pathways to success goals, and then our commitments. So, who would like to start off?
I can do it. I have spent, you know, I spent a lot of yesterday, and I've been thinking about this for a while, but, you know, from year to year, the budget really doesn't change, from our perspective, a ton, right? We have a lot of things that we have to do by law, and we have, you know, we have to, from the school board's perspective, we have to put together, or you guys put it together, and we just say, this is what we're going to ask the, the funding body to, to support. I spent a lot of time thinking about and studying on the local composite index, which everybody in this room probably knows what the LCI is, but it's based on real estate values, very simply put, it's based on real estate values in the locality, local sales tax amount, and local income, and then that determines how much that Virginia, how much of what's called basic aid is going to come from the state versus come from the, the locality, and if those three numbers, income, real estate value, and sales tax are high, then the percentage that the, they determine that, you know, the locality has the ability to pay. So, we actually went up last year from .5888 to .6645, which was an incredibly huge jump in one year to sustain nobody's, I mean, you can't really say it's somebody's fault, you know, because it's kind of like a bad thing that happened to us because we were all of a sudden short a million dollars, but it's also kind of like a good thing because we're doing really well, right? So, it's hard to put those things together and figure out, you know, how do we resolve that, because the county might be doing really well, but, you know, we got kind of hit with a big loss of state income, and then we have to ask the locality to, to pick up the balance of that. Again, nobody's real fault. And then, of course, you know, the other thing that you have to kind of keep in mind is that the basic aid, or standards of quality, or whatever, is a calculation that's, and I did spend, and Shannon Urban will attest to the fact, I spent a, a ridiculous amount of time, time trying to square all that in my head, and, but it's basically the, like, it's just basically a whole bunch of calculations of what's included and what's not included, and how many people, teachers are included in the, you know, standards of quality, and it's not everybody, it's just some of them, and so, then they say, okay, well, you know, we'll do the, we'll do this amount is what you should get, and then, no, well, we're going to take sales tax out of that, and then we're going to take this out of that, and we're going to add a little bit of this, and we're adding a little bit of that, and then we'll divide it by the number of kids you've got in the system, and that's what they're going to give you, which, and it doesn't even count exactly of all we get from the state, because there's other stuff we get from the state too, but basically, whenever they say something like, we have to give a raise, they say, we're only going to give the, our portion according to the LCI of that raise for the people that are covered in the SOQ, so, you know, you've got 150 people who are covered in the, in the standards of quality, and then we have 300, so we have another 150 people who are not covered, and everybody's supposed to get this raise, and then, but only, we're only covering 40% or 30% of the people that we count in the SOQ. So, it's just like really, really, really hard math, and it's, I mean, by the time you get done with it, you get a head cold, right? That's what happened to me. But what everybody understands, most people understand, that the SOQ is not sufficient to run a system, that's basically what I'm saying. And there was, thank you for this, Dr. Hester, when I was at the, at the school board convention, I listened to a Fairfax County presentation about the J-Larke Study, so the J-Larke, J-Larke is the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, that does a lot of work for the state, studying some of the things that they do, and comes up, they come up with recommendations on how to make things better, and they determined that the average, because we are one of the states, like maybe six or seven states in the nation that use an SOQ formula versus an amount of money per pupil, we are underfunded compared to the rest of the nation by 14%. We're 14% underfunded, does that make sense? Okay. Okay. And in our region, the South Atlantic region, we're 4% below the average. And, you know, in our neighbors who use the per pupil versus the SOQ, like West Virginia, for example, we're 25% less funded than students in West Virginia, which, you know, I'm not saying anything about West Virginia, but I kind of am. But I don't really have anything against West Virginia. It kind of sounds like I do. Anyway, what it ends up meaning is that, according to J-LARC, we should have $2,000 extra in state funding for, in Nelson County per pupil. That's really what our funding should look like, according to the J-LARC study, if I said that right. So, I mean, I'm like, kind of got renewed in wanting to kind of advocate, politically advocate for them to make some of the changes that the J-LARC study implemented. So I'm going to try to do that this year. Hopefully, it'll make a difference. The other thing that I like to bring up every year is that it's not our job to come up with the money. We, our job is to come up with a budget of need. How many times have I said this? A million? Yeah. A budget of need, not a budget of want, but a budget of need and what we need to do the right job we need to do for the kids of the county. And, you know, my personal opinion is like, one of the most important things that we can do is recruit, retain, and reward teachers and all the staff so that we can provide the best education that we can for the students of Nelson County. And I also feel pretty strongly that it, we are morally obligated as a county to provide that. You know, it's not a choice. It's something that, well, it isn't a choice, it's we legally have to do, provide education. Now, are we going to, we want to, morally, we want to do the best job that we can do. And our budget is really very intricate. I mean, lots of ins and outs, it's hard to understand, but it isn't smoke and mirrors. You can figure it out. We're here to answer questions. It's right on the website. There's, I mean, there's, if you want to know what's going on and where we're spending the money, you can find out. Nobody is hiding anything. So I think that that is also an important point to make, that we are, we run a tight ship. We are, we do the best we can do with what we have, and we have some of the best staff and teachers anywhere. And then, maybe not finally, but it's not really two pages. The cost of running the school is not ever going to go down because 80% of our budget is people. And, you know, cost of people should go up and we should, you know, reward the people that work really, really hard for us. And we, in order to recruit them, we need to be competitive in the, in our area. You know, because why would somebody drive from Augusta to work for Nelson if they could stay in Augusta and make 10 grand more, you know? I mean, I know why, because Nelson is better than anywhere, duh. But, you know, we really need to make it, we need to, you know, bring that one Nelson feeling, you know, from us to the teachers as well. And we got to do our part by advocating for that. So, you know, we need to have competitive pay and benefits, and insurance always goes up. And, you know, we know, you know, housing is, is an issue here. It's hard to, you know, to be a teacher and to be able to find a place unless you were born here and you, you know, you're living in your mom's house, which, you know, it does happen a lot. But, I mean, you come from apomatics. Anyway, and it's important that we, you know, recognize also that teachers and even paraprofessionals have to study and work. It's not like a nine-to-five job, you know? It's, it's, it's extra. It's not, it's not like a secretary's job where, I'm sorry, there are some secretary's jobs, so, and I don't want to dismiss secretary's jobs at all. But, you know, you do have to work really hard to make sure that you have everything that you need to, you know, bring those kids, you know, to manage the kids and give them what they need to progress. And, yeah, I guess that's probably all I'm saying. So my, just to summarize it again, my goal is to recruit, retain, and reward the teachers and all the school personnel and the system staff. And then I'd like to also take a really good look at our CIP plan because I'd like, I think school buses are really important. We haven't bought one in, what, 10 years? I mean, I know we had the electric buses, but we had to give up two to get those two. So it's not like we have, you know? And then I would like to look into the other CIP priorities at some point at one of our work sessions so we can kind of go through that and see if we can knock any of those bad boys out. I mean, obviously, my, my goal is to provide, help provide the best education.
I will say, but like, there are some things coming out to us that we need to research a little bit more about, maybe perhaps money being infused into schools for modernization, school construction for modernization and updating. So we really want to look at, like, how can we take advantage of that money to be able to infuse it in, in supporting our schools? Like, and I had that conversation with Ms. McGary, like, we want to look in to see what we can do with this. We don't know really yet, but is that something we can use to update these back systems in our other buildings? And that, I consider that a part of that modernization and updating and, and something, quite frankly, that's critical to be able to do.
Right.
So we're, we're trying to look at, you know, other revenue options from the state and from other, to be able to provide those CIP improvements.
Right, exactly. And I would expect that every opportunity that we have to not hit up the county, we are taking, and we always have taken, those opportunities. I mean, like, how did we get the playgrounds, right? That was like, you know, that was using grant funds that we had, and it was, I mean, thank you, because that has been on my list for 10, 15 years. So, and I think that really kind of speaks to the skill of our staff, you know, to be creative, mindful of opportunities, ready at a drop of a hat to go for those opportunities and to take the burden off, you know, the community, but at the same time, understand that, you know, it's all of our responsibility to promote, you know, support of the schools.
Good job. Who's next?
It's hard to follow Mark.
Golly.
And we might just quit now.
And I'm going to go probably a little bit simpler. I mean, I think we've talked over the last few years about sort of what our priorities are and what we think should happen. I'm going to be a little bit more specific in where I hope we can focus a little bit more money coming into this next year. You know, one of the things we've talked about is the biggest portion of our budget is salaries, right? Like, it's people. It's the cost of people and doing business. And we talk a lot about staying competitive with salaries, but it's going to be really important to me that we don't just stay competitive with the salaries, but that we outpace the cost of living. Couple of years, we have given salary increases that didn't outpace the cost of living, and so our people didn't realize an actual increase in salary when that was said and done. So I'd really like for us to be very mindful of that when we're talking about salaries for this next year. We have the best people in our system. And so some will say, oh, it's not about the money, it's about the culture. Well, I think it's about culture and it's about rewarding that culture and rewarding the people in there. So I think it goes, it does go hand in hand, and that's going to be pretty important to me going into this next season. You know, we had to, we had a couple of people speak tonight, and I don't, I'll call out their names. We had Dee and we had Aunt Pat, and, and we had Mika. But Dee and Aunt Pat, if you listen to what they're doing and all the things they're doing, and whether Becky or you or whomever, the people that are in our system do a lot of things they're not paid to do. And one of the ways that I think as a system we can reward is to show that in the pay, in, in a competitive pay for them. There is a lot on a day-to-day basis. You don't, you know, you talked about nine-to-five. I don't care what job you're in, in our system, you don't leave that job when you close that door. I don't care whether you're driving the bus, whether you're doing the food, whether you are the person answering the phone, the administrators in the building, teachers, paraprofessionals, you don't walk away. And so I think it's, it really is important to me. To me, that's number one priority. Number two, and I was advocate to try this, so George and I had to have learned, we shouldn't have advocated for it at the time, but we've got to get that AP position back in at the elementary school, plain and simple. One of the things that we are consistently hearing is student behaviors, the challenges of student behavior, sometimes even parent behaviors. And if we get that AP position back in, that's a road, that's another, I don't want to say roadblock for our staff, but it's another protective layer for our staffs to help and support that school. And we keep burning administrators out either, right? So, I mean, I think that, that's a support, that's a position we've got to get back in. We tried it, right? Like, we were told, we tried it. It did not work. And, and to me, that is probably the second biggest priority that I have going into next, into this budget season. The other thing along the lines with, we talk about student behaviors, and that continues to be, you know, an issue, kids coming in with higher needs, whether it's academic acuity they need growth with, whether it's behavioral, whether it's emotional. I do want us to look back at behavioral specialist, mental health supports, continue to really, you know, we, the majority of our kids are very, very good kids, but what happens is we get some tougher behavioral issues, and that takes a lot of time away from our other kids. So if there's a way that we can provide resources that help those students, but also help the students that are sitting in the class ready to learn, then I want us to look at that, too. And finally, and I've talked about this, Shannon and I have talked about this, and I've talked about it for a few years, I want us to continue to look at wellness supports for our staff and maybe even throw some mental health in that, but just overall wellness, whether it is mental, whether it's physical, whatever it may be, what are the things that we can offer our staff that helps them at the end of maybe a really tough day, decompress, whatever that may be? What can we do to support them beyond our E, I know we've got our EAP program, but something, just some, I don't know what that is, right? Like, I, but I'd love for us to talk about what we could or could not maybe do for that. And those are my big things.
Good job.
It's you, Bud.
So picking up where Shannon left off with the mental health aspect of it, yes, I mean, the schools has been the biggest provider of mental health programs in this county. You know, we have another entity that, that is in the county, but we, as a division, support students, we support the teachers, we support the parents. We have programs embedded in our budget that helps the whole community. So, you know, I know it's been talked about all over, and we see the need for it, that's why we've been coming up with programs to help, help out. But these programs help come out of our budget and it helped, they helped the whole county. They helped the community. The other part of, you know, continuing safety, you know, in the schools, you know, the zero hour program that is great, you know, getting these, you know, all these safety things up and running and keeping them up to date, being able to stay, provide and stay current with all the new technology that comes up. Because it's, this is just the ground floor of where this thing could go in years to come. So we want to be able to keep moving along with that. George and I, we both feel that, all of us feel that, you know, we've neglected transportation for years. You know, it's not just the current board that's been talked about for years, we need more buses, we need more smaller transportation, the vans, all of those things. We need, because that's part of safety. When, you know, when the parent put their kid on that bus, I mean, some of them don't know that bus is 20 years old. You know, some, some of them just don't know that. They see the yellow pad, they see it looks like everybody else's bus running down the road. I mean, we have an obligation when we send kids on field trips to be able to provide safe and reliable transportation to and from. You know, the mechanics are under a lot of stress trying to keep these buses up and running to keep these kids back and forth. You know, where we can't provide bus trans, I mean, school bus transportation, sometimes costs field trips more because we have to charter buses or some other type of transportation that costs the parent more money to get their kid to and from activities. I just think it's time that we get back to talking about providing transportation. It's been great, like, you know, the new playground equipment, that's been one of the ones we could check off our CIP list. You know, the air condition, but it, there are more, you know, we, our schools are more like shared facilities because everybody uses our facilities, you know, no matter, like, you know, Sherstop's using them for training, VDOT is using them for town hall meetings. You know, all of this stuff, you know, is our facilities. We have to pay staff to be there, and, you know, it costs us to do these things. We like to provide these things to the community. We, I mean, rec department uses our facilities, everybody uses our facilities, but, you know, it's at a cost to us. Everybody don't see that, you know? Why don't we just use the high school for this? Why don't we just use a, you know, middle school for this? You know, it costs. So people need to understand, we, you know, we don't, we do these things, but it's at a cost. So don't just think that we, that it's, it just happens. It costs us when it does happen. Outside of school, after-school activities, you know, you know, just providing facilities for training or social events or whatever we, whatever the building is used for. I mean, let's have to make sure that the air condition works in the summer for those things and the heat is working in the winter for those things. All that stuff comes back to our staff. Speaking about our staff, we, you know, I come from a profession that is ongoing training. You have to recertify or get something new every couple of years to keep your license to teach. And that comes at a cost. And sometimes, you know, in past years, we have tried to offset that cost to our teachers and staff, and it's gone down some, and we need to get back to helping them with that, with that cost because they do a phenomenal job and they, they have incurred these costs, some increased back on them, where we were providing more of a percentage of help to them. I would like to get back to giving them that help that they need to continue their education. You know, I've been on this board for a while. I've seen, you know, staff members start as teachers, and now they are here in central office, you know, just watch the whole game. I've seen teachers that have been here for the whole time that I've been here, but we want to keep the quality of teacher that want to be here in Nelson. We want to be able to pay them to be here, reward them for staying with us, and make our salaries competitive with all our neighboring counties. So that's, I have more to say, but I think that's enough.
You know, Tom, let me just say this, talking about buses, the number you just gave us, so outside of, outside of daily transportation, the buses ran for extra events, 4,600 miles, 1,000 more than last year. Our buses are not running less because our kids are doing more.
This is what you want.
Exactly. Absolutely, it's what you want. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, and there's a benefit to our community for that, right? Like, our kids are, are being exposed to more things, they're figuring out those five Cs, like, where do they want to fit in the world beyond high school?
And one of the events that took place in the summer was actually a community, a community organization event to pick up kids, to bring it. And that's, you know, whether it was actually our own registered enrolled kids or homeschool kids. There are kids in Nelson- There are kids in Nelson, and they were participating in an event, and we said, yes, we will, we will help out with this, we'll provide the transportation for that. So I think, I, I think it goes a long way, all the different avenues that transportation and our facilities are being used to support community.
I apologize towards that.
You're absolutely fine. Thank you. So I want to, a couple of things that I am interested in, obviously, as Mr. Perkins said, I think we're all now, you know, we've always been in unison about the buses, and I know I, I beat that horse all the time with that drum, whatever you want to say. And I can't remember exactly how many we have in our fleet now, but I'll reduce the number to sixty in our fleet. The state guidelines are fifteen years or three hundred thousand miles is what they would like for you to stay in. They consider that a safe zone. I don't know for sure where we've exceeded that so far, but I do know this, we've got two electric buses we got on federal rent, and I think, I'm getting ready to start my seventh year on the board, I think we've only bought two other school buses since I've been on the board. So new school bus, gasoline-powered school bus with air conditioning is, what, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think? Sometime before, in, in, in our tenure here, maybe none of us were on the board then, but a decision was made at the county level and at the board level to put school buses into the capital improvement private fund. And unfortunately, what that did was set the table so that school buses became optional. I grew up in a household where my stepfather was the director of transportation for a long time, and, and it was just the number one thing in the household was, that's the safety point, right? He used to say, if we were going to close schools, you can't afford to have one kid get hurt on bus. And so it's, it's near and dear to me about that, because that's the first contact that our students have with the school system, is that school bus and their bus drive. Right? And we need to make sure that we get them to school and from school safely, and that when they go on an extracurricular activity, field trip, sporting activity, whatever it is, that we can get them from A to B without having an accident or without breaking down. And I think it's time that we put our school buses back into the operational budget, because they are a need. They're not a want-to, they are a have-to. And if we want to maintain the state standards, we need to buy four school buses every single year without fail. And we really need to be buying more than that right now, just to catch up. So, you know, I hope, hope we'll be able to do that. Another thing is the assistant principal at the middle school, and that's going to lead me to discussing the SOQs. And, and I am always somebody who wants to take responsibility for what I say and what I do, and I think I was the one that suggested that we drop an AP, an, an elementary school AP out of the budget, because the SOQ said we only needed to have one based on our enrollment. Well, I, you know, I also want to take responsibility for that and say, that's not working. You know, we need two APs for our schools. You know, it might work if it was one elementary school, but it's not going to work with two, especially when they're that spread, that far spread apart. We've got so much going on in the schools now, especially, we always had stuff going on, but we've got more stuff going on, especially since COVID, since we came back out of that. We've got a lot of mental health issues. As Mr. Perkins pointed out, you know, mental health services in the county are lacking, and we, we just had a two-on-one with one of the board of supervisors members the other night, which was a very productive meeting, and, and one of the themes that came out of that was, you know, we talked about, and we talk about as a board, that, you know, when the county doesn't provide a service, because we're the community outlet, we're also the community outreach, so we wind up having to provide the service, because that lands squarely in our buildings, whether we want it to or whether we don't want it to. And, and our job is to educate these kids and give them everything they need to be what they desire to be and the best at it that they can be, all the way through school, not just when they're in the twelfth grade or when they're in kindergarten, but the entire way through, to keep them safe and, and meet them where they are and provide them their needs. So if that's lacking in the community, well, then we have to try to provide it, you know? And unfortunately, the SOQ system doesn't work. Ms. Claire was talking about the J-LARK study, and, and I didn't bring my sheet tonight, I had it at the meeting the other night, but it's in another folder. But it, it is, it is breathtaking, the things that, that are highlighted in that study, the amount of money, it's, it's such an archaic way to fund, okay? RLCI went up, and, and the, the scale stops at eighty, point eight oh, right? Okay? So you take us, at, we went from five-seven, five-six?
Five-eight-eight-eight.
Yeah, five-eight-eight-eight to six-six, right? Okay? And if I remember correctly, you said a long time ago, I think, Shannon, that, that it's roughly a percentage, right? So now we are responsible as a county for sixty-six point whatever percent of our school budget from county funds. So because that goes up, the state funds shrink, okay? So then you look at, say, Loudoun County, and I don't know exactly what theirs is, but they're probably pegged out at point eight oh, because they're not?
They're lower than we are.
Loudoun is?
Loud, we are, we have a higher LCI than Loudoun County does.
How in the world is that even possible? Well, okay, that's interesting. But you take the wealthier counties.
Fairfax.
Who's that?
Fairfax.
Fairfax is point eight oh, okay. Well, you take somebody like a Fairfax, okay, that's at point eight oh, why doesn't that affect them the way it does us? Because our economy is specialized. Our economy is an agritourism economy, and that trips certain things that need to happen within the county government, so that the state thinks that we've got, we're flush with all this money, and the county says, wait a minute, we don't have as much money as you guys think we have, because we've got these other expenses, and the state basically says we don't care. This is how it's going to work. You can afford to pay for the education of these kids this much money, and so you need to do that. It doesn't hurt Fairfax, because they're already an extremely wealthy county as it is. They overcome that, because they don't have the type of economy that we do. So, in a nutshell. And when you look at the SOQs, it's like, I always look at it as like the building code, right? So the building code is a minimum set of standards to build a building so it'll be safe. So the SOQs are a minimum set of standards to educate kids. I don't think there's any school system in the state of Virginia that funds just on the SOQ levels. So hopefully, that's going to get changed. I will give some credit to, to some, some of the, like, Mr. Rutherford on the board of supervisors. We've had some meetings with a couple of the state representatives, and he has kind of helped foster that and attended these things, and he is working at the state level also to try to do that. The funding formula in Virginia needs to change, and we, as a board, only have so much power to make that change. We, we can contact our elected representatives, and we can lobby them, and the superintendent can do that, and people on the board of supervisors can do that, but we need people at home to do that. We need people at home to call your elected representative and say, the school system needs more money, you guys need to change the formula. You know, now that's your representative, that's not all through the state, but hopefully that'll help. The other thing that I really would like to see us be able to do is to be able to have another behavioral specialist within the school system. I think, again, back to the mental health aspect, I think we have found time and time again, that when you have behavioral specialists that are on site, can be available for kids that are in distress, having a bad day, having emotional issues, mental health issues, then we can mitigate some of those things before they get worse as they go through, and, and they can really help and be a real aid to people in distress, and it makes the learning environment better for them, and it makes it better for everybody else, too. So that's, that's kind of that. I really want to see the buses put back in the operational budget. Don't know how that's going to fly. We always get told that there's not much money, and I understand that the, you know, the board supervisors has only got so much money to do stuff. We, we have never, ever endeavored to tell them how to spend money or how to raise money, other than asking for what we need for the school system. We can't generate the money, there's no school tax in Virginia, so we are relying totally on what the state funding is and what the county is willing to give us, as far as what we need for the schools. Any bells?
No.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, and I want to say one more thing, you know, one that you, if you get the opportunity to speak at the other board meeting about education and funding, please do that, because that helps them understand it's not just us asking, you know, for these things that we need, that the community is behind us in what we do. If y'all would do that, that would greatly help our cause to, hopefully, you know, fund the schools that, the way they need to be funded.
Okay. Any bells? All right. So now we are at items for action, and the first is a field trip request for the ESOL class to Washington DC.
I move that we approve ESOL class field trip to Washington DC.
I have a motion in a second, and that is going to be for March 5th, 2025. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And now, we need a motion to go with the closed session.
Personnel.
Personnel. Did you open them? I move that the board go in closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters. That's also on line number two, two point two three seven one, for purposes of consideration of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
I have a motion, how about a second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board's in closed session.